The Academic and Student Affairs Committee for May 1st, 2024 will now come to order at?
3:02 PM.
This meeting was called for the purposes listed in the duly posted meeting notice. The other committee members are trustee Charlene Johnson and Dave Wilson and alternate Dr. Cynthia Letten-Gary. A citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees shall complete the hearing of citizens formed 24 hours prior to the meeting and filed set application with the Board Services Office. There are no citizens signed up to speak before the Academic and Student Affairs Committee today. We have two report items today. We will begin with item A, Houston Community College Reserve Officer Training Corps ROTC Program. This is a report item. No action is required. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This item provides an update on a new recruitment initiative that will allow HCC to outreach to more prospective students of our community for college, career, and military alignment opportunities. With your permission, Mr. Chair, I invite Dr. Desmond Lewis, Associate Vice Chancellor of College Readiness, to the podium to present with our Colonel Glover and visitors who are here, Dr. Lewis.
Hello, everyone. With the introduction of House Bill 8, the college stands at the piedmont of a quickly changing higher education landscape that is filled with opportunity. Change regarding how we operationalize our obligation as an institution to our students as we envision new pathways for engagement that lead to students' successful completion. An opportunity to cast a wider net to embrace previously underexplored potential populations of students that provide them with a safe harbor of belonging. With this said, today we will provide an overview of one of many new pathways for student success that we're working to forge, HCC's ROTC program. As many of you may be aware, for TEA's accountability standards, there are college, career, and military readiness indicators by which high schools across the state are measured for their success. Now, over the last few years, through our various partnerships with ISDs, charter schools, and private schools, we've been able to increase our enrollment for dual credit, which translates to increased access to higher education for often underserved communities. We have early college high schools, PTEC high schools partnerships, established with several districts. These two partnerships exemplify HCC's collaboration with dual credit partners to address the two Cs in CCMR, college and career. Early college high schools focus on college pathways, while PTECs focus more so on career pathways. Still, there remains the M, which stands for military. For CCMR, TEA's military accountability refers to enlistments into armed services. However, there is ample opportunity to do more for our students who are interested in entering into a career in the services as commissioned officers. Today, our presentation will provide an overview of HCC's opportunities to expand its ability to offer salient pathways into the military through collaborative efforts with four-year partners, ISDs, community-based organizations, and much more while leveraging existing internal resources. So, at this time, I would like to ask retired Lieutenant Colonel of the United States Marine Corps, Robert Glover, as our Director of HCC's ROTC Program, to come up and elaborate on the program's mission, vision, and further opportunities.
Before, uh, well, Chair, Trustees, Chancellor, good evening. Before I get started, though, I'd like to say something personal. I'd like to send my family's condolences out to Dr. Norma Perez and her family for their loss yesterday, and we are thinking about them. This evening, I am honored to present to you our plan for the establishment of a Reserve Officer Training Corps program here at HCC, which will have connectivity to the Army, the Navy, and the Air Force ROTC programs here in the Houston metropolitan area. I would also like to introduce some of our future partners who manage their specific service-related ROTC programs. First up is Captain Jeffrey Bowman, United States Navy. He is the Professor of Naval Science at Rice University and manages the Houston Navy ROTC. Next is Lieutenant Colonel Melissa Komisky, United States Army. She is the Professor of Military Science at the University of Houston and manages the Army ROTC Consortium here. Stand back up, Melissa. Lieutenant Colonel Komisky also holds the distinction of being a 2004 graduate of the greatest university in the world, Texas A&amp;M. Not present today is Lieutenant Colonel Ernesto Curriel, who is the United States Air Force Professor of Aerospace Science at the University of Houston, and he manages the Air Force ROTC Consortium. Before I delve into the details of our plan, I would like to outline the agenda for tonight's presentation, and I have six specific areas that I will be covering. First, I'm going to talk about our intent, which is to show the current state of the program and map out the future trajectory for ROTC at HCC. And I'd like to address currently where we are and where we're going based on the Chancellor's guidance. This is our agenda. I have six specific areas that I'm going to discuss this evening and what our current position and future trajectory is based on the guidance that's been provided. The first is to inform each of you of the National ROTC Program, its purpose and basis, and the goals and visions of that program, which are universal across the spectrum of the military departments. Following that, I'm going to discuss the HCC mission and vision statements that we have developed and speak to the goals for the program that we will endeavor to establish here at HCC. I will also discuss the current structure of the Houston-area consortiums and who they're tied to or what universities and colleges they're tied to in this area, and how being engaged with those consortiums will maximize the potential for our students here at HCC and provide them with the tools to complete their bachelor's degrees and make a difference in our country and in their communities. Then I will discuss the current strategy that we're going to employ regarding the school districts that feed into Houston Community College. And finally, we'll be talking about the many opportunities that this pathway, or pipeline as I refer to it, will present to our students and how they will be able to achieve careers of value and the impact that they will have on our armed services. First, the ROTC program mission. The mission of the Reserve Officers Training Corps program is to develop future officers morally, mentally, and physically as leaders in the armed services. We want to instill in them the core values of honor, courage, and commitment to the services, to the nation, and to their communities at large from where they came. This purpose is essentially to take those college graduates and commission them as officers who possess a basic professional background, are motivated towards careers in the military, and possess the potential for future development and capacity to hold higher responsibilities of command, citizenship, and government. For those of you who don't recognize this particular young lady on the slide, this is Major General Angela Salinas, United States Marine Corps retired. She is a native of Tyler, Texas, and holds the distinction of being the first Hispanic female general officer in our Marine Corps. And at the time of her retirement in 2013, she was the ranking female general in your United States Marine Corps. So from the National ROTC mission, we have developed an HCC program mission as shown here on this particular slide, and this is fairly easy to digest. Basically saying, "We want to work collaboratively with the various ROTC consortiums here in the area and create academic and career pathways that will help HCC students obtain the knowledge, skills, and leadership qualities necessary for the ever-evolving workforce as well as commissioning in our military." Here are the mission goals that we've established. From this mission, we have developed these operational goals that are aligned with it. While I'm going to focus on four specific mission goals, I will cover all of these, and two of them will come up later on. Oh, I'm sorry. First, we're going to provide exceptional education and training experiences that prepare students for success in their military and civilian careers. Then we're going to foster the development of leadership skills and qualities through rigorous training, mentorship, and hands-on experiences. We're working to personalize the learning pathways for each student, accounting for their individual strengths, interests, and career goals to maximize their potential for success. We will establish and maintain collaborative partnerships with relevant organizations, veteran services organizations, and other agencies both within and outside of the military to enhance the training, opportunities, and resources for our students. We will continuously do evaluation and improvement programs to ensure that they remain effective and aligned with the ever-evolving needs of our students and the military departments. Finally, we want to ensure compliance with DOD and federal mandates aimed at promoting and increasing representation of minority populations across those military departments. With respect to the HCC mission statement, our vision, along with the five corresponding goals which you'll see in a second, are focused on program evaluation improvement, which will be ongoing and continuous. The vision statement also aligns with the fact that we are a minority-serving institution, a Hispanic-serving institution, and an Asian-serving institution. Here are our vision goals. I have basically four benchmarks. I want to increase recruitment and enrollment across the board. I want to expand the academic pathways, but I also want to work on improving retention, graduation, and transfer rates. So when I say we're going to do M and E or measurements and evaluations, that will be a continuous aspect of the program throughout the cycle. And again, the last bullet to increase minority commissioning in the armed forces. Now let's talk about our Houston consortiums. This slide is very busy. There's a lot of logos up here, but basically it boils down to this. Commander, Captain Bowman operates and manages the Houston Navy Consortium for Navy ROTC. In that consortium, he has Rice, Prairie View, A&amp;M, Texas Southern, UH, and Houston Baptist. The Army ROTC program and consortium managed by Lieutenant Colonel Komisky has got UH, UHD, Texas Southern, Rice, Houston Christian, the University of Houston Clear Lake, and the University of St. Thomas. And the Air Force ROTC consortium here is comprised of UH, Rice, Prairie View A&amp;M, Houston Christian, University of Houston in Victoria, University of St. Thomas, University of Houston Clear Lake, University of Houston Downtown, the University of Texas, which is the other school, and South Texas College of Law. All right, now, this is how we're going to address our targeted snapshot of populations that we're working with. A lot of folks would naturally look at this and think that the prime population to draw from for the HCC ROTC program is your junior ROTC programs out there within the five school districts that we have actual physical contact and relationships with. This is what I refer to as our area of operations. However, that particular data bullet speaks to a portion of the possible populations of those ISDs that fall within our area of operations. In this example, we're looking at the largest Houston Independent School District and the smallest ISD, Stafford Metropolitan School District. However, I would like to note that we're trying to cast as wide a net as possible with respect to the type of students that we're looking to include, not only, that we're looking to include in the program, not only junior ROTC student cadets, but also those students who are in the dual-credit programs, the adult education and literacy programs, bridge program students, and upper-bound students. Now we're going to talk about ROTC scholarships. The National ROTC Scholarship is a four-year-funded scholarship that takes care of tuition, books, fees, and provides a monthly stipend based on academic level, freshman through senior. Or, the option is available to those students who are awarded the National ROTC Scholarship to apply that money to their room and board. The duration of the ROTC scholarship or the National ROTC Scholarship is four years. Now, there are additional scholarships, and it's different within each of the services, but we have three, three-and-a-half years, three years, or two-year versions. Commissioning happens at graduation, the very same day. You graduate, cross the stage, and you'll be taking in and taking your oath of office as a commissioned officer in the armed forces, either as a second lieutenant in the Army, the Air Force, or the Marine Corps, or as an ensign in the Navy. Scholarship tiers are broken up differently, and I'm going to use the Navy ROTC scholarship as my example. So there are three tiers to the Navy ROTC scholarship. The first and second tiers are heavily STEM-related. In effect, the Navy, there's this thing called High Demand, Low Density Military Occupational Specialties, or MOSs. High demand is, "We don't have enough people." Low density means the population to fill that particular skill set is low. All right? So having said that, let's use nuclear power as an example. Operating nuclear reactors on aircraft carriers, all 13 of them, and nuclear submarines and glowing in the middle of the night when it's all said and done, but basically there are not enough nuclear power officers in the Navy. And we're looking to see if we can fill that requirement as we progress through the program. About 75% of all National ROTC scholarships in the Navy go to Tier One and Tier Two levels. The other 25% include majors from international languages and everything else from poly-science to business, to economics, whatever it takes. On a particular note, while you're holding an ROTC scholarship, you must, in order to achieve an ROTC scholarship, you must achieve at least a 1,200 SAT score or a 32 ACT score in the Tier One and Tier Two zones. And while you hold that scholarship, you must maintain at least a 2.5 GPA and be participating fully in your services ROTC program, which includes naval science, aerospace science, or military science, their physical education, their physical training program, and their leadership labs. This is our timeline, and it aligns with HCC's student success framework. We're currently in Phase One, Connection. Now of these benchmarks listed here, we've completed the consortium analysis and reviewed the two existing crosstown agreements, both with the Army and the Air Force. And we're working through some hurdles in establishing a crosstown agreement with the Navy. Those have been forwarded to OGC for review, and we have also made our initial assessment of the potential student populations as we discussed previously. So we are currently in an engaged or ongoing status on the remaining benchmarks in Phase One. In particular, engaging with the college presidents, which we're doing right now, talking with and engaging the COEs, the Centers of Excellence, taking a look at the local ISDs and figuring out the best pathways for them, and then initiating a marketing campaign plan. So I've had a couple of meetings on that, and we're going to have some more in the future. I have, we are also establishing some relationships with our veteran services organizations out there. And I know that trustee Laredo is a member of the American Legion of Women's Auxiliary, if I'm not mistaken. Okay, so we've got a relationship with American Legion Post 77, and part of that relationship is designed to help us or have them provide five scholarships for incoming freshmen to HCC over the next several years. So this really demonstrates the enthusiasm and willingness of these potential external stakeholders and that there's a high level of interest on this initiative. And by the presence of our four-year university partners and also by the city of Houston, because Dr. LaShonda Jones was supposed to be here, but she couldn't make it. We have, we think that we have a concept that can be mutually beneficial to all the parties, both internal and external. So I'm also presenting this program plan to the HISd Junior ROTC instructors during their instructor workshop on June 25th, and Stafford MSD will be represented there also on that particular day. As I've spoken, I've met with the American Legion, but I'm also having talks with the VFW, the Marine Corps League, the Navy League, the National Naval Officers Association to discuss other potential arrangements that will benefit the students in this program. Here are the program outcomes. One, this will provide a real-world education to our students. It's going to provide a comprehensive education that prepares them for careers with significance, and it emphasizes practical skills and knowledge applicable to various professions. As far as leadership and training opportunities go, ROTC programs focus on developing and instilling strong leadership traits and principles. Experience, plenty of it. ROTC experiences and training can translate into careers in the civilian and private sectors, and they develop such skills as problem-solving, teamwork, discipline, and adaptability. And finally, service to the nation. By participating in the ROTC program here at HCC, students will earn the opportunity to serve their country and make meaningful contributions to society. Having said all that, let me close with this. I didn't have the opportunity to join a junior ROTC program when I was in high school because there wasn't one. It was the 70s. We were just coming out of Vietnam. There was a lot of turmoil. A lot of schools decided they didn't want to go down that road. But after high school, I enrolled at Texas A&amp;M University, and I joined the Corps Cadets, a college ROTC program, and later achieved a commission as a second lieutenant of Marines. This is where I learned core values of courage, honor, and commitment. This is where I learned how to lead and especially how to follow. This is where I learned how to take care of my sailors and Marines that I was given responsibility for. Those lessons learned helped me become who I am today, not only in the military but in my life, and they also helped shape the way that my wife and I have raised our children. What am I really saying? The one thing that I want to emphasize is that a career or even a short-term contract in the military prepares a person for life. The opportunities that I was presented, the training I received, the leadership opportunities that I held over the course of those 22 years and 17 moves across this country helped me accomplish many things in my life. If you're asking, "Why were we doing this?", this is the why. Establishing an ROTC program here at Houston Community College will do all those things for every one of our students, and it's something that we have to pursue and pursue with vigor. This program will help create informed and responsible citizens, citizens who will move forward in their lives to serve and lead their country and eventually their communities. Now, on the aesthetic, all right? I will know that this program is successful, and you will recognize that this program is successful when you see graduates of this program after they get their bachelor's degrees, and they go out and they do their thing in the communities, in the service, and they come back in their communities and are helping to strengthen the foundation of those communities. You will know that that's a successful program. But make no mistake, this life is hard, really hard. But it is a life that is rewarding. It is a life that will guarantee a career after service, and it is a life that is purposeful. So, I want to thank each and every one of you for listening. And Madam Chair, Trustees, Chancellor, thank you for the opportunity for me to inform you about the HCC ROTC program. Are there any questions? I'm going to take that as a no and walk away now.
No, I have a question. I have a question.
We've got questions for you.
I know you stated that you would be meeting with Stafford?
Stafford MSD as well as HISd instructors.
When will you meet with Fort Ben ISd?
Okay, that was just a representation. The target of opportunity right now, because of the instructor workshop for ROTC and HISd, allows me to hit up 42 different instructors from HISd and the two instructors from Stafford Metropolitan.
Okay.
But I have had conversations with the CTE Departments of Fort Ben ISd, Katy ISd, and Spring Branch ISd. As a matter of fact, the current director of the Spring Branch Navy Junior ROTC Program is one of my cohorts. We were instructors. He was at North Forest, and I was at Sterling at the time, so. All of them are on board. It's just, let's go talk to the ISDs and make sure they understand the pathway and the different ways of getting it done.
And the opportunity presented itself for you to talk to HISd and Stafford.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, one more question. You stated that Tier One and Two require that you have a 1,200 SAT score, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
What about?
In the Navy ROTC program, it's a little bit different than the Air Force, a little bit different than the Army.
Okay. Well, Tier Three is the same, has the same requirement?
No. Well, yes, 1,200 and a 32 ACT.
Okay.
But that's for the other majors, not STEM-related.
Okay.
Let me do an administrative timeout. When I say that the Navy is looking for nuclear power officers, they are looking for nuclear power officers. All right? They're high demand, low density, not enough people, a lot of open boat spaces kind of thing. Boat space means there's a gap. And so they want to try and fill those as fast as possible. 75% of all scholarships go to Tier One and Tier Two. The other 25 is all the other programs.
I understand. Well, I just want to say that was an outstanding presentation, and in reality, you didn't, there was no reason for us to ask any questions because you put it all out there. You gave us all the information we needed, and I feel your passion with this, and I just think it's going to be a great success.
Thank you, ma'am.
No, thank you.
Any other questions?
What is your intended onboarding grade level for the high schoolers for this program?
When you say onboarding, you mean?
The students that will enter into the program at the high school level.
Students that enter, well, they won't enter into the program at the high school level, but the target audience is nine through twelve. Why? Because you want to hit, you want to plant the seed as early as possible at the ninth grade level and allow that culture to start to grow. And culture is like the measles, right? You're exposed to it, it spreads all over the place. So if you develop a program that has good, strong goals and a pathway that's clear and obvious, not only for the student but for the parents, that culture grows, it becomes stronger, and it spreads. So it will definitely translate, I believe, to HCC as they're making their decisions about where they go. Now, side note, the National ROTC Scholarship, if a student is awarded out of high school a National ROTC scholarship, that is not the person who's going to come to HCC. The person who's going to come to HCC wants to have a career in the military, wants to be an officer, and was not awarded the National ROTC Scholarship. Ma'am?
So the, the reason why I'm asking for the onboarding, because we always talk about ninth to twelfth grade, but the onboarding starts in seventh and eighth grade, or you won't have any ninth graders. That has been a challenge that we have faced. And when I talk to students, or when I talk to parents, or even when I talk to the high schools, this, we have this intent of, of students starting dual-credit in eleventh grade. If, if adults cannot finish, or if adults finish community college on the average in six years, why are we expecting our high schoolers to complete community college in two? So the, the onboarding allows these students to see the possibilities earlier rather than later so that in ninth grade, they can take their courses. I would think that if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, they can enter into the junior ROTC program in ninth grade, can they not?
Yes, ma'am.
So if they can enter into that program in the ninth grade, could they also not, could they also enter into our dual-credit program at the same time in the ninth grade?
I am not a dual-credit expert, so that is the wrong question to ask me.
Could they?
Could they?
And that's, that's, that's a question over to your right. So if that is indeed the case, then these students have an opportunity to complete their two-year degree before or at the time of graduation, which helps them to move into this program as juniors in college, which is a really good program. My stepson did this. So I understand how, how valuable this program is because he was colonel at forty-one.
Okay.
So he came out of our junior ROTC, but the requirement was he had to go to college to get a degree so that he could go into the military.
Yes, ma'am.
So I understand the value of it, and he did not do dual-credit. So fast-tracking our ROTC, adding them to the dual-credit pipeline earlier rather than later. And if they have that two-year degree, if I'm not mistaken, it allows them to bypass that twelve-hundred SAT because they already have a two-year degree.
I'll have to look into that, but I will, I will find out, and I'll let you know, ma'am. I will say, you are familiar with the Cullen Academy Initiative at HISD, correct? The service, the services also have a thing called NDCC, National, NCDCC, National Cadet Development Corps, which is, which goes down into high schools that don't currently have junior ROTC programs and middle schools, I think there's two in HISD, that they enroll seventh and eighth graders into that program so they can get the taste, the flavor, and then make a conscious decision to go into the junior ROTC once they hit the ninth grade level. So those kinds of things that you're talking about, they are out there. It's just that the dispersion of those, those particular programs is low, and it varies from city to city. I will also say that as far as Army ROTC goes, they started an initiative about four or five years ago called SORD, S-O-R-D, and the acronym escapes me right now. But basically, SORD is only located in two, in two spots, Los Angeles, California, and Houston, Texas. It is designed to go out and recruit majority-minority populations into the military. And so that's, that is something that I'll be talking to the SORD folks about as far as collaboration and working together and finding more potential students for the HCC ROTC program.
Trustee Wilson, any questions?
At the expense of asking a question when the chair said not to ask questions because your presentation covered everything. First, I'd like to say, though, Lieutenant Colonel Glover and the servicemen and women in this audience, thank you for your service. My father was in the, in World War II, and my son was in the Army in Afghanistan. And regretfully, I failed the physical when I tried to get in the Naval Academy because of my hearing. But I understand the purpose and the discipline and all the great aspects that an ROTC program can bring to this school. I look forward to working with you.
Sir.
And I look forward to the success of that. And if you need something from this board, come and see us because we're going to provide you the tools you need to make it successful.
Ah, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
And I do have one follow-up question as well in that same vein. I'm very excited about the, the concepts that you laid about both stressing personalized learning pathways as well as meeting the urgent needs of the armed services. And as, as you dive into your first two phases and really flesh out your plan going forward, I'd be very interested for you to come back and report to us about if there are any unique combinations of skill sets that the Armed Forces would find particularly enticing. I know you mentioned nukies. I know that, that even when I was going through school twenty years ago, it was difficult to get, find nuclear engineers. So excited about the potential there. But also, you know, we've got a lot of strong programs that may not on their own lend themselves to, to being as attractive, but paired with another, another degree might be very attractive. So electrical engineering paired with cybersecurity or civil engineer paired with a foreign language so that folks can be deployed anywhere in the world that, that is, is on the Armed Forces radar, deployed with the Corps of Engineers. Just as you're working through your, your planning, if there's anything that pops up in terms of pairings where we can identify students that have a predisposition for that and steer them toward those additional, those additional stackable credentials of value, that could be hugely influential for us as we, we plan out future years' worth of budgets and programs and staffing, et cetera. But very excited about not only how HCC could plug in and help the armed services, but how this can strengthen the institution overall. So thank you for the presentation.
Hitting on that point, coincidentally, last week, we were speaking with Captain Bowman, and he mentioned cybersecurity. Everything is incentivized nowadays, correct? So in cybersecurity, for cybersecurity reenlistments, the Navy, the Department of the Navy, which the Marine Corps falls under, unfortunately, is offering $100,000 bonuses for reenlistment. So, and I do know that nuclear power enlisted personnel, when they finish their first term, they, about three years ago, they were offered $50,000. I believe that number's gone up to $75,000 now. So people that join the military, the, the, the reason they join is different based on where they're from and who they're from and their family makeup and all that good stuff. It is a pathway to financial stability. It is a pathway to family security, and it is definitely a pathway to greater things in life. So I, I am basically a product of that. So, okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I would like to indicate to Lieutenant Colonel Glover as well that Ms. Jones has arrived. Would you like to introduce her, please?
Ah, there you are. So ladies and gentlemen, this is Dr. LaShonda Jones. There is no such thing as a former Marine, first of all. She is a Marine through and through. She enlisted way back when, and we're not going to name the date. She, she is also works in the mayor's, Houston Mayor's Office of Veteran, Veteran Military Affairs. And she's, I met with her yesterday, and we were talking about different collaborations.
Thank you very much. Excellent job. Thank you.
One more thing I'd like to say. We used to have the junior ROTC present the colors here at the board meetings. I love that when it was going on. I don't know why we quit doing it, but I, I would like to see, I'd like to see that happen again.
But we did quit, but we stopped during COVID.
COVID. Well, COVID's over. Let's start it back.
Wonderful.
I have a, I just wanted to say thank you, Colonel. And also, you're correct. You know, the military does amazing things and transforming people. And so that's always been my line. If you can't find a college to finish your classes, join the military. They'll help you. They'll help you get yourself focused and on, and straight on and, and help you to, to get a college career or a career. So I do believe that with, with that program, bringing it to the community college and, and partnering with the schools, I think that we can be very successful. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will move to item B, Academic Pathways and Credentials of Value. This is also a report item. No action is required. Dr. Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This item presents information about HCC students who pursue academic plans designed to facilitate transfer to four-year institutions. With your permission, Mr. Chair, I invite Dr. Andrea Burge and her vice chancellor for research and planning to prevent, present the item, please. Dr. Burge.
Thank you, Chancellor, trustees. Transfer has long been considered a prominent part of the mission of community colleges. Two-thirds of all freshmen and sophomores in public higher education in Texas are in community colleges. Seventy percent of students who graduate with a bachelor's degree in the state of Texas have some units, some courses transferred in from a community college, and roughly a third have transferred in at least thirty units. For this reason, it remains an important part of HCC's mission. Today, we are going to present an overview of our academic pathways. These are the pathways that are designed to prepare students for four-year institutions and to transfer their coursework without loss of credits. Academic majors are very popular at Houston Community College. They comprise nine of the top ten degree plans at HCC. As a note, there are additional transfer plans such as computer information systems, studio arts, communication, English, chemistry, math. I could keep going, that do not make the top ten list, but are still, but are still available to our students. The majority of HCC students are on one of the academic transfer pathways. Roughly three-quarters of students overall are pursuing the academic transfer plans, and about eighty-five, eighty-five percent, eighty-four percent to be precise, of dual-credit students declare these academic majors. Now, academic, for the academic transfer plans, there are two measures of success. The first is that they earn a credential of value. That is typically an associate's of arts, an associate's of science, or an associate's of arts in teaching. The other measure of success is that they successfully transfer to a four-year institution. And frequently to students, they cite this as their primary goal. For the next section of the presentation, I'm going to present numbers you have not seen before. The graphs on the next slides include only the academic transfer intending students. So when we are examining the success of this group, we are removing all of our workforce students. These numbers are not reported in any state or federal data sets, but it's important to look at them separately so that we understand the pathways of our academic students. And I will use the terms academic and transfer intending interchangeably, even though they are not quite. So when we consider the success of these students on academic pathways, we see that twenty percent of the students who begin full-time complete their associate's degree within three years. Now, most of our students who begin full-time do take at least some part-time semesters, so that's in about a hundred and fifty percent of time. Just over nine percent of students who begin part-time complete within three, and these typically, students typically will take six to nine units a semester, and so they are taking a little bit longer to transfer. We can see that the completion rate is on an uptick for these students. Now, as I said, for many of those students, their primary goal is to transfer to a four-year institution. Students frequently transfer before earning an award, and some of them will transfer only. Some of them will transfer and earn an award, and some of them will earn an award and choose not to transfer immediately. Roughly, well, thirty-seven, about thirty-eight percent of our students either transfer or earn an award or both within four years. Now, when we look at transfer, we typically go to four years because three years is to complete their degree, and the fourth year is a year that they are enrolled in the institution of, institution of higher, of a college or university. And these numbers have remained roughly consistent over the last five years. It's important to note, though, that the, that when we look only at an award rate, we don't give a complete picture of these students' success since many of them do have that explicit goal to transfer. Now, HCC has both general and specific transfer pathways. There's a general multidisciplinary studies pathway in which many of the students have not declared a specific academic specialty such as psychology, sociology, English, biology, economics. This chart addresses the outcomes of the students in the general plans versus the subject-specific plans. We see that students in the general plans earn awards at about the same rates as students in the specific plans, but they actually transfer at a slightly higher rate. The issue with these general plans is that it can indicate that a student is wandering a little bit, or it could indicate that the student does not have a clear articulation plan set, so may be in danger of losing credits when they transfer to the four-year institution. For that reason, we do work to pu, to push people to the specific plans that are designed to have those clear transfer pathways. Now, as, what, the way we look at the success of our students over time is by looking at their attainment of the academic momentum metrics. These are milestones that when a student hits the milestones, they are essentially gaining momentum toward their goal, whether it be transfer or completion. The early momentum metric, particularly the, the retention metrics, the persistence fall to spring and fall to fall, the credit attainment metrics, which are the six-plus college credits and the fifteen-plus college credits, and the gateway course completion metrics, all are very predictive of students who are going to earn an award or transfer or both. So, so our first two metrics are the retention metrics, and these have been very consistent over time with retention of these students from first fall to second fall being about fifty-two percent and fall to spring being about almost seventy-six percent. The credit attainment metrics have been climbing of late, especially for the six-plus college credits in year one. And this is primarily due to the introduction of the co-requisite, which moves the students out of developmental coursework as quickly as possible because they take the developmental course and the college-level course at the same time so they are able to move more quickly towards getting those college-level credits that allow them to transfer successfully. The, we also look at whether they complete the English and math. These are two courses that on every transfer degree plan, you have to complete English, you got to complete math. About students who complete these two courses in their first year are more likely to successfully transfer or complete. HCC is about fifty-one percent for students completing Gateway English in the first year and about thirty-two percent for students completing Gateway Math. Now, it's important to note that two things have to happen for a student to complete both of these courses, one of which is they have to enroll in the course, and the second of which is they have to pass the course. Particularly for part-time students, it's sometimes difficult for them to enroll in both of these courses in the same semester, and so they will end up spreading out the gateway courses into their second year. So the first-year credit completion rate is sixty-eight percent. This means that students in that first year pass about two-thirds of their courses. We've given you the success rates of what I'm going to call the most difficult first-year courses. These are first-year courses with the lowest pass rates. We limited these to courses commonly taken within the first year and math to the four entry-level math pathways courses. And you can see that math is a barrier to our students with four courses out of the top or bottom six. Interestingly, it's English 1302, the second English course, not the first one that makes this list. And so, of course, HCC is very concerned with supporting student success, retention, and completion. So I'm going to tell you about a few initiatives that were that are underway right now to directly impact students' early success. One is the Caring Campus for both faculty and staff. The staff initiative, the staff Caring Campus, which is branded as We Care, was initiated in the fall of 2023 and is a set of behavioral commitments chosen by the staff to be particularly effective at focusing on connectedness and service to students. It promotes a culture of change to help HCC serve our students better. Caring Campus for Faculty, and these are both evidence-based programs, is scheduled to begin implementation in fall 2024. It focuses on the non-instructional behaviors in the classroom that promote student connectedness and success, because for our students, the non-instructional behavior that promote efficacy, belonging are as important as the instructional behaviors. We've already completed the self-assessment, and we are on schedule to begin implementation in fall. We're also looking at advising for retention and completion, including professional development that includes these components, and implementing and looking into advising software platform to enable technology-assisted advisors, which helps our staff recognize which students need assistance and when quickly. It takes a manual out of the manual and brings some of the artificial intelligence and statistical processes to our staff. We also, of course, are focusing on transfer students from this group. Best practice is not advising or transfer center or faculty, it's all. Advisors working with transfer centers, working with faculty, so of course, we are working on integrating all of these components and strengthening. For example, transfer advising is now in our advising syllabus, and we're looking at how to make sure that we have transfer conversations with students as early as possible so we can talk to them about those articulation plans that put them in those specific pathways that lead to seamless transfer. Questions?
Trustees, any questions?
I just have a comment. This is a, this is a great understanding for for the board because we have to make goal decisions concerning what dual credit early college high school will look like for transfer. This is going to be a key to understanding how we're going to do that. Our early college high schools in general do very well, but it's time for growth. And so to understand how we're going to assist these students who do not get their two-year degree, how they're going to transfer, this is, this is an important conversation. So thank you for the structure and the strategy, because we needed to understand that in order to make appropriate goal decisions.
Thank you.
Questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The Academic and Student Affairs Committee meeting is now adjourned at?
3:50 PM.
The Audit Committee for May 1st, 2024 will now come to order at?
3:53 PM.
Oh, wow. This meeting was called for the purpose listed on the duly posted meeting notice. The other committee members are trustees Monica Reichardt and Dave Wilson and alternate trustee Eva Laredo. The opportunity for public comments. A citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees shall complete the Hearing of Citizens Form 24 hours prior to the meeting and file said application with the Board Services Office. There are no citizens signed up to speak before the Audit Committee today. Topic for discussions and our action, we will begin with item A, the Internal Audit Status Report. This is a report item, no action is required. Chancellor Ford Fisher, please introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. This item is a quarterly status update in accordance with the Board of Trustees' adopted Audit Committee Action Calendar. With your permission, Madam Chair, I invite Mr. Terrence Corrigan, internal auditor, to present the item. Mr. Corrigan.
Thank you, Chancellor. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Board members. So as the Chancellor indicated, this is a routine quarterly status report on internal auditing. So the contents of my presentation, I'll present summarized information on internal audit status information. There'll be follow-up observation action plans reported on and mainly in your attachments, and we'll go over whatever external audit and review type activity is going on at HCC. All right, so we had a fairly busy quarter this quarter. We issued all the reports that are listed here. So we had the deferred maintenance report, we had two asset management reports, one on facilities and one information technology. And then we had some special project type information that we completed, new funding, enrollment information, and complaints grievance process information. And then we completed three college campus safety and environmental reviews this quarter. So we have one audit that's still in the finalization, finalization stage. I was hoping we could get it out this quarter, but we still have some issues to follow up on on the HERF3 CARES Act. So audits that we have in progress, we'll be looking at SB 17, the new DEI regulation, where in process of doing the IT disaster recovery audit. We will be doing internal quality assurance review that we do every year, that we don't have an external audit done on our internal audit department. We're going to basically be combining that this year with the Global Internal Audit Standards Project, transitioning to the new standards that the Institute of Internal Auditors have come out with. And so we need to be transitioned to those new standards effective January of 2025. So our future audits, we have the payment card industry, the PCI data security review that we have scheduled. The new regulations for that will be effective March of 2025. We have the Title IX review. New rules on that came out on April the 19th, and they're supposed to go into effect on August 1 of this year. And then we are going to be looking into the student mental health, so we'll have a review on that, which I guess is timely since May is Mental Health Awareness Month. But May is also Internal Audit Awareness Month. So we will be issuing a newsletter on internal audit awareness to all the employees at HCC. I'm sure y'all are looking forward to that.
Yeah.
Is there any correlation between the two in the same month?
Yeah.
I would think so.
It can cause some mental distress. So, so programs that we're still in implementation of, we have web content accessibility, and we're making progress there. We have some consultants that I think have submitted resumes, and I think we're in the process of of contracting them, and we have procured a scanning tool to scan the web for vulnerabilities. So that's moving along and as it needs to be, because we do have the Office of Civil Rights Agreement, the security and safety program that we're trying to implement. So, follow-up information that's in your package, you have all the audit observations that we've issued in reports in the past, that will, that report details observation action plans that have been completed. It also details action plans that are still in progress and the expected completion date of those action plans. And then we have the McConnell's and Jones' recommendations follow-up. There were 19 of them, 18 of them have been cleared. The only one that's left is the automation of the grants process, and that is scheduled to be completed in August of this year. So all those grant recommendations, my McConnell and Jones, should be coming to a conclusion. All right, so HCC procured services. We are in the process of procuring a new financial statements external auditor, which would be put in place for five years. My understanding is that the proposals from the various firms that would be interested in doing that work is due on May the 8th, so that's coming up pretty soon. And then regulatory imposed, we are in the process of doing the every-three-year campus safety and security audit that is required, that the Texas School Safety Center has regulatory oversight over, and our risk management office is in the process of managing that review right now. So that's my report, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Committee members, do we have any questions?
That is amazing.
It is.
Thank you for the detailed report, and I'd like to say that there are a couple of audit observations that we will have to look at from the governance point of view, in particular, page one of 10. Is it one of 10 or three of 10? Page three of 10. There, we're going to have to make some governance changes as a result of these reports. These are very detailed reports, so they're helping us as a board to understand, to learn what we don't know, because we don't know what we don't know. And we appreciate the detail in this, in these reports, so that as we follow them. Also, I'd like to make sure that the Academic Affairs Committee Chair gets the enrollment report that was done. He needs that, because we need to have a conversation.
Well, that that has been shared with them, but.
Do you have it? He doesn't know if he has it. So if you can rescind it, we'd appreciate it, because I think it's, it's important in the direction that Academic Affairs is going with the new funding formula, that they can help the board to better understand what we need to do. So thank you.
Okay. So I guess we should. We can certainly do that.
We should, we should move on to item B, which is the Report on Quarterly Control and Compliance Attestation. This is also a report item, no action is required. Chancellor Ford Fisher?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. This item is, as you indicated, a quarterly control and compliance attestation report. With your permission, Madam Chair, I invite Dr. Ashley Smith, General Counsel, to present the item. Dr. Smith, thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor, trustees. Please report, there are no attest, attest, attestation items today, and so our report is very short. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if a report can get any shorter than that, Ashley. Thank you.
How'd you handle them?
The meeting of the Audit Committee is now adjourned at?
4:04 PM.
Nailed it. Thank you.
The Committee of the Whole Meeting for May 1st, 2024 will now come to order at?
4:04 PM.
This meeting was called for the purpose as listed on the duly posted meeting notice. A citizen desiring to appear before the Board of Trustees shall complete the Hearing of Citizens Form 24 hours prior to the meeting and file said application with the Board Services Office. No citizens are signed up to speak before the Committee of the Whole. Is there a motion to approve item A, monthly investment reports, financial statements, and budget review for March 2024?
So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and second. Chancellor Ford Fisher will introduce the item. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. This item is the Investment Report, Financial Statement, and Budget Review for March of 2024. With your permission, Madam Chair, I invite Jacob Akin, interim vice chancellor of Finance, to present this item. Mr. Akin.
Madam Chair, Madam Chancellor, members of the board, it's a pleasure to be with you this afternoon. I would like to take just a few minutes to review the financial performance of the institution through March 31st, 2024. Some of the major changes to our revenue include ad valorem taxes being up 6.8%. Through the end of March, we've actually collected 98.6% of our total budget for ad valorem taxes, and this falls in line with our typical collection trends year over year as we collect the vast majority in January and February of each year. Additionally, our tuition and fees are up by 7.8%. Enrollment is up 7.17%, and this has resulted in us collecting $102 million through the end of March, or 96% of our total annual budget. With these two items together, you can see that our revenue collection is well ahead of schedule through the end of March. In terms of state appropriations, we've only collected 48.4 million, 70, or roughly 70% of our, of our total state appropriations. This is due to the change in the schedule of payments made last year by the coordinating board. We received three payments, we've received two so far, and we see the next one this month. Investment earnings. Investment earnings for March 2024 totaled 2.2 million and 11 million through the end of March. I'll remind you that it wasn't too many years ago that 2.2 million would have been a good year for us, and so we are earning more money in our investments now than we ever have as an institution. And March, April, and May are our highest grossing months on average for investment earnings, and so this is very strong performance for us as an institution. Investment income of 2.21 compared to 1.7 million in February. You can see that the rate of returns have been increasing. This is due to unusually high rates of inflation, as inflation continues to persist is a problem, and with very little action by the feds in terms of adjusting interest rates down. So we expect this level of return to persist throughout the rest of this quarter and into third quarter, which will result in a banner year for us in terms of interest earnings. As a matter of background, just a reminder, 67% of our investments are in government pools and money market funds with a high level of liquidity. 33% of our assets are invested in U.S. Treasuries and government-sponsored AAA entities. We manage this on a daily basis and try to ensure that we have our money invested as wisely and as prudently as we can in order to maintain both the proper liquidity as well as maximizing our earnings. In terms of expenses, we have generated 208 million or 52.3% of the budget. Considering we're 58% of the way through the year, you can see that we're starting to trend towards being under budget on our total expenses for the year. In terms of salaries, we've generated 130 million, and salaries are 55% of the total budget. While this is only $3 million under our annual budget for salaries, that represents lapsed salary savings of $7 million through the end of March. Our other line items, as you can see in the appendix, vary a little bit and have some variance, but we expect those to be relatively in line with our budget by the end of the fiscal year. With that, I would take any questions on the financial performance through March.
Are there any questions, trustees? No.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Aitken. Regarding the investment earnings, I think you probably get to it in a bit more depth as you go through your presentation. One question that comes to mind, you've expressed to us that we're enjoying the fruits of this elevated interest rate environment. Question becomes, as we go into next year or at some point when the Fed starts targeting rate cuts, is there a possibility of expanding the pool of government, I see it was about 33%, to include 10-year Treasuries that might help us yield a longer-term return? Is that something that's contemplated at this point?
Unfortunately, that's not possible based on the investment standards set by the state and our own investment policy. So we have a maturity limitation that does not allow us to invest in 10-year Treasuries.
Do you know what that limitation is, just for clarification?
I believe it's five years or less.
At a very minimum, we could look at.
If I may, I might recommend that we consider the mix between money market funds and investment in Treasuries if we would like to be more aggressive with our investments, which certainly we can afford to do at this point because our cash reserves are so high. Normally, we try to maintain 66% in liquid funds in order to ensure that we always have the sufficient liquidity necessary to meet our daily cash obligations. So there is room for us to consider a more aggressive approach. We would, of course, need to do that within the bounds of our investment policy and within the bounds of the State Investment Act, but there are options that we could consider.
Chancellor, it'd be great if we could see some of those options from the administration, you know, what other things we might consider, keeping in mind what Mr. Aitken assured about the need to preserve liquidity.
Certainly, we'll be more than happy to follow up on that. Thank you.
Are there any other questions, comments? Trustee Wilson.
Just one observation I'd like to make is the fact that our investments are, the percent is exceeding our debt on our bonds. So, you know, that's kind of unheard of, where we're paying less for our debt and we're getting more for our cash. So we're in a very good, we're in a very good position right now. I don't know what the feds did today, but I'm sure they didn't move interest rates. I didn't hear if they did. Yeah, and so, you know, let's just ride that train as long, as far as it'll go, as far as I'm concerned.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
Next is Item B, Report on FY25...
Excuse me, Madam Chair. We do need to take a vote on that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Voting has concluded. The motion passed. Trustee Davis, I'm sorry. I didn't get it.
I said yes.
Okay, received. The motion passed with a vote of six to zero.
Next is Item B, Report on FY2025 Budget Development. Board Budget Workshop Number Five, Overview of All Proposed FY2025 Budgets. This is a report item. No action is required. Chancellor Ford Fisher will introduce the item.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. As you know, we are on the countdown to 2026 and beyond. So as we roll out our plans to become a more resilient student-first institution with credentials of value, we present Budget Workshop Number Five. So included within this presentation, you will see various scenarios that we submit for your feedback and guidance to us. Workshop Number Five. So with your permission, Madam Chair, I invite Jacob Aitken, Interim Vice Chancellor of Finance, to present.
So in the presentation today, we'll start by looking at our current operating fund. We will also quickly review the other funds that will also need to be approved next month during the June board meeting. Just a reminder, we have the board meeting on May 15, and then two meetings in June in order for us to finalize and approve the budget, in order for us to stay on our timeline for FY25. Let's start with a quick review of where we are as of the end of March. You can see that our approved budget of $398 million is going to be low in terms of our total available revenue. We expect to end the year at approximately $435 million in total generated revenue. And even if we expand 100% of our budget, that means that we will, in all likelihood, be contributing $36 million back to fund balance at the end of this fiscal year. So as we prepare to approve a budget next month, some of the things that we'd like for you to keep in mind is how aggressively we budget towards projected revenue and how well we try to address the significant needs that we've been discussing for the past several months. So let's start with revenue. In the presentation today, there are a number of scenarios. These scenarios are not meant to be all-inclusive of the options that you have as board members, nor are they intended to be directly linked with one another. What we're trying to do in this presentation today is give you an idea of the choices that you have as a board in terms of setting expectations for revenue generation, as well as which expenses you would like to see approved for next fiscal year. In terms of ad valorem tax, we could move forward with no new revenue, which would be a lower 0% increase up to the voter approval rate of 8% increase in revenue. And so that range would most likely be from 0 to 8% in terms of increase in ad valorem taxes. Tuition and fees, we expect growth next year. On the low end, we prepared for an increase of 2.5%. On the high end, or optimistic end, we're targeting 8%, very similar to what we've done this year. In terms of other local income, we do expect that later this year we'll start to see cuts issued by the feds, although we expected cuts to be made in second quarter and first quarter of '24. So anything can happen, but we've tried to build in to the budget a gradual decline in our other local income. And then from a fund balance, you as members of the board have the option to authorize expenditures out of fund balance. In the past, we've been averaging between $7 and $10 million. We have presented deferred maintenance needs as high as $87 million, and so you could consider any range between the 7 to 10 that we've been doing now, up to $87 million. Let's start with state appropriations. As this is formulaic, and at the writing of this report, we expected that our state appropriations for FY25 to be $68,243,000. As you know, the Coordinating Board are considering the rules, and they are making updates to this process. So there might be some minor changes to this, but we wouldn't expect to see a significant increase in this despite any of the changes that they are considering for the April, May, and June meetings. As we move to ad valorem taxes, under Option A, you can see that we would be maximizing our revenue collection by going with the voter approval rate of an additional 8%. That would yield an additional $16.6 million in new revenue. If you look at Option B and Option C, we are reducing the amount of our new revenue to 5% or 3%, and then Option D would be tied to our no-new revenue. Again, at the writing of this report, we had no estimates from either counties regarding the value of property. We received our first notice this week, and the growth of the tax base is very moderate at 0.87%. And so while these options still apply in terms of the amount of new revenue that we can collect, we will, between now and August, see potential changes to how generating this amount of revenue would impact the tax rate that we would need to charge in order to reach those milestones. But without requiring any additional vote, these are the options that you have as the board. In terms of tuition and fees, Options A, B, and C represent the various projections for growth in enrollment, while Option D also includes a 5% reduction in our tuition rate. Now, typically, tuition and fees are approved in February so that we can meet truth and tuition requirements in terms of hosting classes and expectations for fall. I don't think our students will mind too much if we decided to make a cut in our tuition between now and then, and so that option remains open to you as members of the board. But this walks you through a number of scenarios where you can look at the expected net revenue after waivers based on different scenarios for enrollment growth, and then if you did decide to pursue a tuition cut, what a 5% tuition cut would look like. In terms of our other local income, optimistically, I believe that will be no more than a reduction in 10% of our total income. Based on the economic performance of 2024 year-to-date and the expectations through the end of this year, we don't expect a dramatic decline in interest rates through the feds, which means we would expect high earnings again next year. However, pessimistically, we think it could potentially drop as much as 30% if we see a major economic shift or a world event that might have significant financial impacts for not just Houston, but the entire country. Again, in terms of fund balance, you can see that last year we allocated 7 million. We'd like to increase that to 15 million as a minimum, and we've been talking about trying to get to 15 million for several months now. As a reminder, our fund balance is a representation of our day's cash on hand, which is essentially our cash or liquid balance in terms of our average operating expenses by day. And so our policy requires us to have 180 days' cash on hand. This is a liquidity policy to ensure that we have the operating funds necessary to continue operations. 180 days is already one of the most conservative standards in community colleges within the state of Texas, and using the 180-day standard, that means we have $147 million of available fund balance that we could spend while still maintaining 180 days' cash on hand. So the $87 million for deferred maintenance that we discussed earlier is actually possible based on our current balances and our current policies for reserves. This is just a summary of Options A, B, C, and D compiled in terms of total revenue. Again, we can mix and match these however we want, based on what you would like to see happen in terms of revenue generation. But on the high end, we're looking at adding budget to, increasing our budget from $398 million this year to potentially $466 million next year. On the lower end, we would expect revenue generation to be similar to what it is going to be this year at $434 million. So we'd like to see a budget somewhere between those two figures. As we move on to expenses, these are the categories that we have discussed in terms of adding additional budget to cover additional expenses. So you can see from salaries and benefits, on the low end, we're looking at a 4% increase across the board for all employees, to the high end, which is 7.5% for faculty and staff, and moving adjunct faculty from just under $800 per credit hour to $1,000 per credit hour in terms of their compensation. Known commitments are additional expenses that the college will incur next year in order to meet contractual obligations in addition to other growth-related and inflationary-related expenses that we need to cover simply in order to provide the same level of service next year that we're providing this year. In terms of safety, security, IT infrastructure, network, and deferred maintenance, we have reviewed all of these items, and on the low end, we've been targeting a $5 million increase for the next four years to catch up on many of those items. On the high end, that represents essentially the totals that we need to spend in order to play catch-up in those respective areas. So let's start with salaries and benefits. Again, under Option A, you can see a growth of 7.5% for faculty and staff with $1,000 per credit hour for adjunct faculty. I'd call your attention to the second line, allowance for vacancies. While we have never hauled this out specifically in our reports to the board, we have always allocated in the past $1.9 million of allowance for vacancies. And what that means is that if our total budget is $237 million, we reduce that on the budget by 1.9 million with the expectation that there will be inherent savings due to vacancies within our positions. Considering our past performance for the last several years, one of the things that we're doing in this budget is proposing increasing that allowance for vacancies from $1.9 million to $5 million. Additionally, you can see the total costs associated with these changes based on the proposed increases based on the individual employee groups and the associated benefits. Our known commitments are broken down by category there on the left. Some of the highlighted changes that we've identified since providing you the last board presentation are listed on the right. The most notable among those is the contracted change for utilities. The most notable among those is the contracted change for utilities. In terms of deferred maintenance, we've tried to break this down for you by college. We have this by building, we have tremendous data associated with this, but this this just shows you that the highest priority is that 87 million dollars that we've identified, which buildings and which colleges are in greatest need. In terms of safety and security projects, here is a proposal for how we would try to ladder these expenses over the next several years in order to address all of our immediate safety and security needs. You'll notice that we're recommending 5 million dollars over the next four years or proposing 5 million dollars over the next four years. We can't do all of these at the same time, but we could certainly accelerate some of these improvements beyond simply 5 million dollars per year. With regard to our IT network and infrastructure, this represents our standard plan. And the budget that you see on line one is a result of the technology fee that we charge to the students. So we collect this money from the students and utilize that money to try and maintain our infrastructure for student support. You can see that in most years, the amount of money that we're collecting from the students is insufficient to meet the annual needs identified by IT. Additionally, we have outstanding maintenance from prior years that currently totals 8.3 million and will grow to 13 million dollars in FY25. An additional 5 million dollars over the next four years, as you can see, would allow us, based on future projected revenue, to get back on schedule with our IT maintenance. And at that point, we could reassess how we would like to collect revenue in order to address this need. These, this list here is a representation of those items that we discussed in the presentation during the board retreat. You can see that we have instructional service support, advising software, dual credit support, Coleman parking, the associate degree of nursing waivers, and the police safety and security. That totals 8.2 million. So again, just like with the revenue, as members of the board, you can go through and decide which items you would like to fund and at what level you would like to fund those. Based on that determination, that would be the total amount of revenue we would need to collect in order to meet those projected expenses for next fiscal year. So if we take option A as our initial proposal, we would expect to generate 466 million dollars in revenue, and that would result in a projection of 458 million dollars in expenses, leaving, as you can see there at the bottom, excess revenue of 8.1 million dollars. So this allows us to do 5 million dollars of additional service in each of those key infrastructure areas, fund all of the new projects, and address salaries and compensation at seven and a half percent for all employees and 1,000 per credit hour for our adjunct faculty. And so what would be helpful for us is over the next several days, if you could provide your feedback and comment on this, so that when we come back in May and then in the first meeting in June, we're trying to present a budget that reflects your recommendations and and your thoughts and comments on these various scenarios and the proposal for funding for next fiscal year. As we move on to the auxiliary budget, please keep in mind that the auxiliary budget utilizes student activity fees along with revenue generated through non-academic business and support services such as leases and rentals in this facility, our bookstore commissions and so forth. As you can see there, there is an increase in our budget. This is due primarily to the impacts of inflation and the need for additional funding to provide the same level of service moving forward. As we look at the proposed restricted budget, this budget deals with our grants and contracts. So the revenue and the total budget is really set by the agreements that we have with the granting agencies. There's very little that we actually can do to change the the total revenue on this. And so there you can see the proposed budget based on the collected revenue. With the proposed capital and technology plan budget, this again is revenue that's collected from the students in terms of a technology fee. This was also referenced in the IT budget, right? Those, the IT budget and this are tied together. Here you can see the proposed budget for next fiscal year and the allocation of expenses across those categories. So we have one more meeting in May, and then we would like to bring a final budget to the committee of the whole the first month in June for approval and and submission to the full board at the second meeting in June. And so we get one more bite at the apple before we have to present some final numbers. So again, just a reminder, your feedback is necessary in order for us to address these issues to your liking and and to meet your needs. With that, I will take any questions.
Are there any questions for these comments?
Chancellor, could you, based on the reports that the audit committee has received, I'd like to sit with you so that I can reconcile a few of the line items in the budget as opposed to the audit. Because we have agreed to do a baseline audit, but based on the review of this this proposed budget direction and the the audit reports that we received, there are some things that I need to make sure that we understand in terms of bringing the system to balance. And what we would like to do with the baseline audit, and from what I can see, we'll have to be a little more robust and go past a baseline audit perspective. So I'd like to sit with you and the internal auditing to make sure, because I can see that there are some things that I have to make sure I understand as chair and that the audit committee needs to understand before we move forward with with, what is this, 400 and what million? And the other question is, how long do we have hold harmless?
Until the end of August of 2025.
Okay, so we have to then generate that bare minimum with with the new funding formula.
Correct.
And we are not quite there yet.
But we are moving in that direction. Absolutely. Precisely.
So that's a goal to move toward.
Precisely.
Okay, that's it.
We have a plan. We have a plan in place to become much more robust, much more proactive, and that's one of the reasons why we asked for the instructional support as well. The members of the team have been deployed, as you saw in the email that was sent to the board. We have already started looking at the profit centers and what they need in terms of public relations, communications, external support. And so everyone now is working on the financial modeling per college to determine exactly what is needed in terms of their credentials of value, the stackable certificates that will be offered from the beginning of the next two months through the end of 2026. That gives us a measure to then look at how we project to the future. So we have a plan in place. Everybody is on board and very enthusiastic about the work that we do because it's very focused. So yes, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Trustee Wilson.
Yeah, you know, I, we talked about, one of my projects was the healthcare, and there's tuitions or students with tuitions in the budget, and there's money for parking in the budget. I see that. And I had more of an idea of everyone in the healthcare tuition free at the college, not just 100 people. And if you look at our budget, I got to thinking about some things. Our tuition and fee from in district is about 42 million. Is 25% of that fees and 75% tuition?
So our our fee revenue is closer to 50%.
And our tuition is 50%?
Yes. So so our tuition is very low, and and especially depending on the students and the courses that they take. In some instances, fees can exceed tuition.
So if we collected 42 million in '23 for tuition and fee, the tuition half of that would be 21 million?
A bit more, but yes.
Something that's just, I'm just talking round numbers here. And then we're projected to have a 46 million dollar surplus this year. Well, I want to have the administration, and from my standpoint, take a look at making for the whole college tuition free, 21 million. It looks like we have it. I think that would supercharge this institution, and I think it'd be a bold move, and I think it would help our enrollment. And with when our enrollment goes up, our completions go up, our graduations go up, the benefits to the community goes up. And I would like to see a budget with no tuition for the whole school, for every campus. And I wouldn't mind voting for an eight percent increase in property taxes if I knew that money went to tuition for students. And we had 46 million, so I just want to see what that would do. I would like to see if if we had a model here for this school to do that. Now, one thing I want to make clear, too, is I don't want to make something totally free, because when it's totally free, people think it has no value. And with my little school, I used to give kids benefits and this and that, but I charged the full amount for them to come in. They've got to have some skin in the game. And if they don't have some skin in the game, they're not as apt to be successful. That's just a fact. And so the skin in the game here would be fees and their books, and the college is going to pick up the tuition. I know I've talked to a few people, but I realize I'm springing this on the board and the budget committee all of a sudden here in in the college, but I'd like for us to look at that and take a hard look at that to see how we could make that. I have a vision, we would be the talk of the whole United States, and everyone, it would put us on the map. Everyone would know that, you know, Houston Community College is tuition free. And I think that would supercharge our enrollment and our completion and and our transfers and our retention for our students here. So that's, and in two weeks, we're having our goals before this. That's one thing I think we as a college need to decide what our goals are first. And we're going to have a meeting in two weeks, and that'll be just before the budget. But there's places we can cut and save more money. You know, we need to get get in shape fiscally, and I think we need to be a leader in the community colleges for the whole United States. And that's what I'd like to see this board adopt and this administration. Thank you.
Trustee Wilson, you know, we talked about it, and I I love your idea. I love it. And I just want to know, Mr. Atkins, do you think that it's possible to make that happen?
So that would be about an 80 million dollar haircut for the institution to eliminate all tuition. That obviously is about 20 million dollars more than our most optimistic revenue projections. And so that would require a cut in our current budget of 398 million dollars in order to provide that level of benefit to all of our students.
I thought the, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Let me clarify that. I misspoke. In district. I want it tuition free in district, not out of district and not out of state. And that's a 21 million dollar reduction, not an 80. Correct?
That would be obviously much more manageable as an institution.
That's what I'm proposing, not total across the board. But it kind of would be fun if we reduced out of district and got people from Lone Star and Sand Jack coming here, wouldn't it?
Absolutely. Trustee Davis.
If I could just respond. Trustee Wilson, it sounds like you're suggesting Mr. Atkins present us with an option E, just so that it's one of the options that we all get to chew over and contemplate. And just to clarify the record, I'm sure he misspoke when he said we would be raising taxes eight percent. We're not contemplating raising taxes. This is based on the statutorily mandated cap on revenue increases that's being driven by the increase in ad valorem taxation.
So that is correct.
Yes.
Our total
That's what I meant.
Our total revenue would increase by eight percent. Our tax rate, in all likelihood, would remain very close to where it is now.
Any other questions?
I just have a comment. I like I like adjunct faculty getting an increase in salary. I think that's, I am 2,000% for that. I think that is great that it's it was presented. It's it's long overdue, and we lost a lot of adjunct faculty, a lot. So if we're going to grow, we're going to need adjunct faculty back. So I am in full support of that 1,000 dollar per credit hour for adjunct faculty.
Adam Chair.
Trustee Lareda.
Yeah, I think that that's great. You know, our adjunct faculty is the majority of the ones that teach the ACC students. So so definitely we need to take care of them better. Also, I know that, I always wondered, there's a lot of money out there, and there's this philanthropists that that are giving money, but we need to make sure that we are also in that line for the giving. I know our neighbors down the down the road, their students are getting free tuition now because of, because one of the the donors that gave to all our neighboring colleges a couple of years ago, and I said, what about us? What happened to ACC? We didn't apply. So if we don't apply, we don't get. So we need to start applying for some of those grants that are given out there because we do, we do need it. So and then therefore we could do, get the free, the free tuition for our students. You know, years ago, when when I was a principal, I always remind people this, that I saw a need for our students to need free lunch, and it was always coming back that you didn't qualify because you didn't meet that number. So I suggested that we try and do the whole school wide and let's, because, you know, everybody's about numbers. So we did. And now that program, that free lunch program went nationwide, so they could do free breakfast, free lunch. So it was just because we did the pilot program at our school, but it was because we saw a need. And I know that for many years, I've also said, we need to help our students with the tuition. And we have so many out there that do need the help, and especially those that don't qualify for the FAFSA. You know, we have that threshold up there that needs that needs help. So whatever we can do to help them would be greatly appreciated. And I know our numbers would go up, and and not just that, but we would have more graduates.
That's right. I agree. I strongly agree. Trustee Wilson.
A couple more things. I just, I don't have any notes, and I'm speaking from the top of my head.
From the heart.
Yes, that's from the heart. The other thing I'd like to see, too, is happen is I'd like to make a run at Spring Branch and Katie, to see if we can talk them into and have a vote to get them to join the taxing base for the district. You know, Katie, we're having good success out there, and our revenue is good, and they're all paying out of district. But it would be a lot better for those students out there if they didn't pay. But it would be a lot better for those students out there if they didn't pay anything, if we could pass some kind of, but the property tax would take care of that. But that's another part of my plan too. And also if we've got financial aid coming in from the federal government or somebody else, we still going to take that. So I don't want to, we got to work out a plan where if we're going to get the financial aid from the federal government, we still want to take that money, but for the rest of the people that don't qualify for the financial aid and that. So really, I don't think it'll even be as much as twenty-one. And let me remind you, we had a, we're projected forty-six million dollar overage this year. So if we took twenty-one from forty-six, that's, we'd still have an overage of twenty-five million. So there's a lot, the devil's in the details. So that's, and we've got a great financial department headed by a great man and we're going to come up with some great ideas for this great institution.
And Trustee Wilson, you mentioned financial aid. We should take that money, you're right, because if we paid tuition, then it would cover the fees, the financial aid could, so. Great idea. Any other comments?
I've got one.
Trustee Cheeven.
Yeah, so Trustee Wilson, I appreciate your bold vision and challenge to both the board and the administration on this. Really, really excited about where you're going. Very excited to have the conversation in a couple of weeks about that particular proposal. I'd ask that we maybe pull together another, a couple of additional ideas about what we could do with that budget. I know in the past, we've talked about kind of a broader base, kind of a HOPE-style scholarship, maybe chipping away from it at the books and fees side of it versus the tuition side. Just an understanding of all the different permutations that we can approach, you know, bringing the most benefit to our students and turbocharging enrollment. I like the idea of a bold move that gets attention and kind of gets the community excited about HCC in a way that maybe they tune into the background for them so they haven't checked in in a while. So love the thread, just think if we could talk about a few options versus just the one, maybe an E, one, two, three, four. I think that would be a really, really few, not, I figured you don't have anything to do for the next couple of weeks, Jacob, so. But no, just I think that would be good to lay out some additional alternatives. Though I do, I'm really excited about, Trustee Wilson, what you've laid out, so.
You know, Trustee Cheeven, I understand what you're saying, but in my mind, if I was told, oh, you can get free tuition to go to school, that's more attractive to me than your books and fees. You know, because first thing I'm going to think, oh, I can, I can pay for my books. But if I can get free tuition, then I know I'm able to go to school. So I think that the free tuition option is really great. But like you say, we'll talk about it, you know, as a board. Oh, yes, man, that's very attractive, very attractive.
Right. Your mic is not on, your microphone is not on.
We know it works.
I was getting the signal from them.
It has worked for six years. So our seniors fifty-five and older, they were even happy at half tuition. They were excited at that. So the fifty-five to sixty-four year olds came at half tuition and now they have their own credentials of value in addition to being able to take classes anywhere for anything and not have to pay tuition. So it is working very well. I think we can work something, I think we can work something out.
All right.
I do have some questions, but I can't help but pile on. And I hate to be the dissenting voice because I'm just a very practical financial person. So I think it's important that we really scrutinize and interrogate, what does that do not just today when it's sunny outside, but what happens when we have a rainy day, because rainy days do come. So I want us to kind of keep that in mind. So I'm all for exploring and interrogating every option. But I think embedded within that consideration has to be, what does that do for this institution in terms of its long-term, you know, prospects as far as its financial health is? It was not too long ago that this institution was having to tighten its belt and climb its way out. So I want us to kind of keep that in mind. So you probably, you're going to receive a two-page, two pages of questions from me that this presentation has answered a lot of them and it was just because it was hard to follow the presentation without context. So if I get a chance, so I'll try to reduce them down, but just bear in mind that those questions were sent before the benefit of hearing you present. Some of my questions have to do with attempting to reconcile, or at least it's on my list of questions, but since you're here. On the IT side, on page nineteen, you have a depiction of what the expenses ought to be for the IT and network projects where you have about, you can go back to that slide. Where you have the total required funding at eight point eight seven three million. So at first glance, I was attempting to reconcile what's contained here with what's depicted on slide twenty-nine, I mean twenty-seven, I believe, where you lay out the the proposed capital and technology plan budget, which is separate from that five million infrastructure that you talked about. So what's the interconnection between these different, because I, at first glance, it read as though that eight point eight seven three million was inclusive of that five million for infrastructure, but it appears that's not the case.
So as we look at the IT budget and as we look at the IT capital budget, that's later in the presentation, keep in mind that the top line here, the forecasted revenue, that's the revenue that's collected through student fees and is represented in that capital budget. The expenses that you see here are our projected expenses for repair and replacement of our IT infrastructure. And then the difference between the revenue, the expenses and the accumulated unfunded total carries over. So the eight point three to thirteen to ten, that's a function of our projected revenue, our required expenses and our carryforward expenses from prior years less the five million or whatever we decide to allocate as a board to help support that. And so the, those two items are connected in terms of the revenue that we generate, the expenses and what we try to do. What we plan to do and need to do is listed here. The budget that you would be approving for the fund is based solely on the revenue generated, right? We can approve more than what we collect in revenue in that particular fund. But in Fund One, here in our operating budget, we can allocate more to try and help catch up. So there's, there's a correlation between the two funds and how we're trying to address our aging IT infrastructure.
Got it.
And I will explain that in more detail in my response to your inquiry.
I'd like to address that because replacement and repair is not the only thing that we need to do. That's not the only thing we need to do. So I'd like to have a conversation with you about that because from an audit perspective, there are some other things we need to do. And so the Chancellor and I have had that preliminary conversation and the internal auditors have brought to the surface some things that we need to consider. So we can have a conversation about that very coming to me, so I'll get with you.
I'd welcome that. The other question I had, the projection right now is a hundred and forty-seven million dollars in the fund balance in excess of the hundred and eighty-day liquidity target that we've established. Is that target based on where we are today and how likely is that to shift between now and August thirty-first?
So that projection, that is a representation of where we were on March thirty-first. So at that point in time, we had a hundred and forty-seven million dollars. When we're looking at August thirty-first, after we've closed the year and rolled our revenue out of our operating fund back into fund balance, we're projecting that number to go up by another thirty-five million.
Quick math, that sounds like we could be at a hundred and eighty-two million.
Yes.
Okay. So I'm trying to reconcile then if there's a likelihood that we'll have in excess of a hundred and eighty-two million, never mind what we're contemplating for next year's budget, but the deferred maintenance number that came back to us was eighty-seven million. And so there's a need to sort of reconcile, what are we leaving on the table that we might need to consider because we have the excess funds available? I asked some specific questions in what I sent out, but I think that's an important thing to take into consideration. And Chancellor, to the extent we have other pressing needs, I think I'd rather be divergent at this point, put it all on the table, just like Trustee Wilson said, and then force us to make those tough decisions. What do we do, what do we pull back on?
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions or comments? Okay.
I guess one last comment just to build on Trustee Davy's last comment. I always get, my ears always perk up when the words deferred maintenance are said right next to each other. And I think it's not just the eighty-seven million. Mr. Heinz's almost half a billion dollars figure is firmly lodged in the back of my head and will stay there for a very long time. So my understanding, it's not just the deferred maintenance, but also the five-year look ahead on maintenance and looking at it holistically to ensure that we're having, you know, the discussion around the full range of opportunity sets and outcomes, I think is critical. My understanding is that that data will be made available to us in the next week or so. Really excited to dive in and understand a little bit better.
And not to belabor the point, I couldn't help but jump in on that. Part of the thoughts that I had, you know, we're thinking about everything as it stands relatively today, but we now have bachelors in AI and if you think about what the implications of AI are for our institution, you can't ignore the potential for quantum computing, Internet of Things. And so how does our technology plan anticipate that in the context of five years down the line? And so we're looking at the numbers today, but if we're going to be this twenty-first century leading edge higher education institution, we have to have that at the forefront of our minds as we think through these, I think, quite frankly, investment decisions that we need to make.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you so much.
You too.
The meeting of the Committee of the Whole is adjourned at? No, this is a report.
Five o'clock PM.
That was great. Have a good evening, everyone. Everyone.